All right. Our clerk says we're up and going online, so it's six o'clock. So I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Edgefield County Council, June the 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM. We appreciate everybody being here tonight. We're gonna begin with the invocation led by Reverend Brian Ayers, the Assistant Pastor of Sweetwater Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. However, before I ask you to stand, we're gonna, first, when we stand, we're gonna have a moment of silence for Ada Duncan and her family. Ada was a dispatcher who tragically passed away about a week ago, and she was a longtime dispatcher in the Sheriff's Office. Matter of fact, the sheriff told me that yesterday would have been her 25th anniversary with the Sheriff's Department. So it's a very sad time for that family, and friends, of course. So I would say that let's stand and have a moment of silence for Ada Duncan and her family, and then we'll have the invocation. Thank you.
Before I pray, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I've had the privilege of working with Sheriff Roland and his team as being one of the chaplains for the Edgefield County Sheriff's Office. And what these guys see and go through each and every day is mind blowing. And so, in your prayer time throughout the weeks, I pray that you lift up not only these guys, but the Sheriff's Office and the city guys, because there's a lot of stuff that takes place, and emotionally and mentally, it's tough. It really is. And so, we're gonna pray for them guys as well. Let's pray together. Father, we love you. We thank you so very much for who you are. And Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, I do pray that you put a hedge of protection around, not only the city council, but the Sheriff's Office, and all the deputies, and, Lord, I pray for the city, Edgefield City Police as well. And Father, I know, day in and day out, there's just, we live in a wicked, wicked world. And Father, I just pray that as we conduct business tonight and the affairs that take place here in Edgefield, we'll keep in mind, and the decisions that we make will best benefit not only me as a citizen, but everyone around us.
Thank you. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, counsel, before we approve the agenda, I have one change I need to offer. Under new business number one, which is our resolution honoring an Edgefield County citizen tonight, I'd like to move new business number one to right after the employee of the quarter. So if everybody's okay with that, we'll move that one there. Any other changes to the agenda we need to make tonight? Hearing none, there's a motion to approve the agenda as I've presented it.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Moody makes the motions. There a second.
Second.
And Dr. Kenyon, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now it's time for two special recognitions, then. The first will be the employee of the quarter, April Morgan, our county planner. So I'll turn it over to the administrator to tell us why she's the employee of the quarter.
Thank you. I'd like to read the recommendation that we received for April Morgan. It reads, "April previously was employed by our tax assessor's office for at least seven years, where she excelled by entering data assisting customers and doing assessments which she became certified for. April then joined the building and planning family and has been here for nearly three years. She started out in the front office assisting customers with building permits, where she became a license permit technician. But when the office was in need of help in the planning department, April jumped in to help. She is now our county planner and assists customers on a daily basis with what they can do with their land, teaching them about our county ordinances and approving their land surveys. Also, as county planner, April has to work long hours to put together meetings for the planning commission to edit and create new ordinances for council to approve. April is often the first to arrive at the office and the last to leave. She is a huge team player, as she always assists me in the front office with building permits. She will help our 911 addresser with any property questions, and she also spends a lot of time assisting our tax assessor's office with reassessments. April, on top of her job requirements, is currently in, currently a college student, as well as taking classes for additional certification to further help the tax assessors. She is also in the process of becoming a certified planner. April plays a huge role in not only building and planning, but also the tax assessor's office. After work, she coaches Edgefield County Recreation Soccer for the children in our community. She is the first person to think of everybody and offer to help, whether it be with work or bringing a meal to a coworker going through a hard season. I am so blessed to have April as a coworker, and I know that many people in the county believe the same. Signed, Dharma Williams." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So April, we'll say congratulations first. And I'll ask you to come up and join us at the front of the room, please, and counsel, we'll all head that way. Okay, counsel, next up is the first item of new business that we moved. This is the consideration of approval of Resolution 2425006 honoring South Carolina Association of Counties 2025 Board of Directors Scholarship Awardee and Edgefield County resident Hartley Byrd. So Hartley is here, Hartley, wave, so everybody knows who you are. There you go, there's Hartley. So I'm gonna read this resolution for everyone. A resolution recognizing Hartley Byrd for her high school accomplishments. Whereas, Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize Hartley Byrd for being outstanding member of the class of 2025 at Strom Thurmond High School and being the winner of the South Carolina Association of Counties 2025 Board of Directors Scholarship for Edgefield County. Whereas, the Association of Counties established this program in 1998 to recognize outstanding students who plan to further their education in our state. Further, the program rotates which counties received this award. Edgefield County was selected in 2025, and the Association selected Hartley. Hartley is a member of the Health Occupation Students of America and the Future Business Leaders of America. She has served as a junior marshal and received her school's Junior Scholar Award. She is also a WIN Silver Award recipient. Whereas, Hartley expressed her compassionate care of those who were affected by Hurricane Helene last year by volunteering at a shelter and distributing vital needs to those less fortunate, and by volunteering at the Johnston Food Bank during her high school days. Now therefore be it resolved this third day of June 2025, that Edgefield County honors Hartley Byrd for her accomplishments and dedication to education and civic duty, and for being the recipient of the South Carolina Association of Counties 2025 Board of Directors Scholarship for Edgefield County. Counsel, you've heard this resolution, is there a motion to approve?
Send me.
So Ms. Ireland makes the motion, and I think Mr. Talbert, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. So first, congratulations to Hartley. And if you also would join us down here for a picture. Okay, we got everybody back now, so let's go ahead, counsel, and move on to the rest of the agenda. Next is the approval of the minutes from the May 6, 2025 regular monthly meeting. Any questions or comments from counsel on the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Dr. Kenyon makes the motions, there a second.
Send me. Second.
And Ms. Ireland, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is our first public comment period, and I think the clerk has, will give me the clipboard, but I think we have at least one person signed up. I'll remind our speaker that it has to be for this public comment period, as for any item on the agenda, and there's a five-minute maximum time. The clerk warns you at four minutes, and then tells you when five minutes is up. So our one speaker is Eddie Kiel, so, Mr. Kiel.
I just came up to speak about going up on the millage rate. First of all, I'd like to thank all of y'all for doing this. I know I'd hate to have y'all's job, people like me coming up and complaining all the time. But I've lived here 30 something years. I've never been in an ambulance. If anybody needed to go to hospital, we put them in the car and took them, you know? And I know that's not always, you know, you can do it, but we never had three ambulances, let alone one and four. And if they would pay for theirselves, I would say get them, you know? And I just don't understand why they're going up. And I talked to him, I think it was him, and he told me that they had to. And why do we have to have so many ambulances? I mean, I'm asking you, anybody, any of y'all.
When we get to that part of the agenda, I'll be happy to explain that, but this is your time right now, so we want to hear from you.
Well, that's it. I'm just wanting to know, all the houses has come in, they don't put, the county doesn't put lights, they don't do the roads, they don't do the water? That's all independent. Where's the tax money going? And I know myself, just myself, me and my wife, paid thousands of dollars just in property tax. That's not including the $35 that they added on to your license plate that was in, didn't even know if they were supposed to do it or not legally. Where's that, all that money going? Just the property taxes on automobiles in Edgefield County. I know some of y'all probably got a new car, know what I'm talking about. It's nothing to have a tax bill on automobile, $1,000 now. That's all I got to say, is something, just where's the money going?
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, counsel, that was the only person who signed up for the first public comment period, so I will close that and move on to reports. Counsel, any questions or comments on the reports? Hearing none, we'll move to old business. Under old business, we have consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance 2425008, and ordinance authorizing and approving one, an enlargement of a joint county industrial and business park created by that certain agreement for development of a joint county industrial and business park dated as of December 31, 1996, as amended between Aiken County, South Carolina, and Edgefield County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto. So before we have third reading, I'll ask the administrator if there's any new or different information we have on this one.
There is no new information. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions about this ordinance? Comments? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to give third reading to ordinance 2425008?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motion, zero second.
Second.
And I think I heard Dr. Kenyon's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under new business, excuse me, old business, number two, consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number 2425007, an ordinance providing for the FY2526 general operating budget and establishing ancillary budgets for E911 Administration, Economic Development, Solid Waste Disposal, Victims Bill of Rights, Emergency Medical Services, Road Maintenance, Tri-County Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor, School Resource Officer 1 through 9, Event Security, Sheriff Discretionary Funds, Clerk of Court Discretionary Funds, Pre-Trial Intervention, and Criminal Domestic Violence. I'll ask the administrator, and this is the final reading, if there are any amendments we need to consider, or additional information we need before we have this final reading.
Chairman, should I address the questions first from the speaker?
You're welcome, yes, you can.
Okay. The question is, where's the money going? The money is essentially going to keep up with the cost of inflation. Council hasn't raised taxes in 14, 15 years, I believe. It's true, we do have growth. Some parts of the county, we have a lot of growth, and some parts of the county, we're losing people. But our growth, I believe, is just under 3%. Is that correct? About 2.4%. So the increase in tax collections is essentially keeping up with inflation, the cost of doing business with the county. Everything costs more, fuel costs more, vehicles cost more, just everything does. That sounds like a simple answer, but that is the simple answer.
Can I, is it all right if I pass something?
That's up to.
Is that all right?
If counsel will allow it, yes, quickly.
Yeah. Down where I live, I know they done built in one subdivision 435 houses. They built in another subdivision, one right there on Martin Town Road. All that going up to the old country club, I don't know how many houses they built in there. You say 3%, I don't know what 3% of, you know? But when you're talking, I'd say a thousand houses down there, and that's probably in the low side. That's a lot of growth to me.
And it does seem like that, and parts of the county are obviously growing so much faster than other parts of the county. That's true.
And vintage, they done added a whole nother section, you know? I mean, there's growth. I don't know where the 2.4 comes in, how they figured that.
I'll adjust that in my remarks in a minute.
And we do issue permits for new home construction, so we have a good idea of what's being built and what's not. And I will say that the EMS portion of the tax bill is the smaller part, the larger part is the school, and general fund makes up a larger part. But EMS itself makes up a relatively small part of the tax bill, and then comes fire and debt service. So an addition of a new house doesn't add a lot of money to the EMS budget, just because it's a smaller part of the overall tax bill.
Other items on the budget?
Yes, there is. We recommend amending the solid waste special revenue budget. In your budget books, that's 022. It is a special revenue fund budget to account for an increase of $17,800. This is because of an increase in fees due to Tri-County Solid Waste Authority giving us an increase. They voted on an increase, and this was based on Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority's increase of $2 per ton on the hauling rate. So both entities are amending their budgets, and that causes, sort of late in our budget season, an increase for us. So we have to adjust our budget to account for that. And that amount is $17,800 is what we recommend amending the solid waste budget for.
So, Mr. Administrator, just to make sure we're all on the same page, this doesn't do anything with the solid waste fee, does nothing with the fee. This has to do with moving money from solid waste reserves into the operating of solid waste money?
The solid waste fund does have a reserve fund, and we will move $17,800 from the reserve fund to account for the expenses. No, we are not proposing to increase the $100 solid waste fee.
Just to make sure everybody's clear on that, want to hear that.
No, we are not, we are not proposing that.
Okay, questions or comments from counsel on this one item about the solid waste increase? All right, so what we're gonna have to do, counsel, and we don't do this too often, just usually the budget, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the budget, have a second, and then we can amend the budget to do what the administrator is suggesting. But you have to open, get all the way to discussion to do an amendment, and then we'll discuss anything else we want to discuss in the budget. So, is there a motion to approve third reading of ordinance number 2425007?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Talbert makes the motion, there a second.
Second.
Ms. Ireland, seconds. Okay, now we're in discussion. So under discussion, you've heard the amendment as presented by the administrator to move $17,800 from the solid waste reserve to the solid waste account. Any questions or comments on that amendment? Is there a motion to approve that amendment?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Moody makes the motions, there a second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland, seconds. Any discussion? I will point out one thing, of course, to my right, your left, and Mr. Moody and Mr. Talbert serve on the Three Rivers, excuse me, the Tri-County portion of this, I serve on the Three Rivers portion of this, and on Three Rivers, they wanted to pass this in May, and I made them wait a month, because we didn't understand it. I didn't understand it, and I found out half the board didn't understand it. So this past 30 days, I've had the administrator talk with them several times and offer alternatives, and we could never find an alternative that would take this down. So we did our best. Matter of fact, tomorrow, Three Rivers meets and makes that official, that that increase will go into effect. So just FYI, I don't know if you guys want to say anything about?
Like I said, it just came about, we've been talking about it the last two months at our meeting, and we knew it was gonna be our last item, and we didn't know if it was gonna be a dollar, $2, all the way up to $5. So luckily, they did sell along $2, and so our portion is 9,000 something tons, so you divide, I mean, multiply that by two, is why it's almost $18,000, so. But it's locked into a five-year contract, I understand, so we should be good for five years, we're just.
You'd hope, but they're always finding ways.
That's what they said, so.
To increase other.
There wasn't anything we did. It was higher-ups that we deal with as a subcontractor that caused this raise.
Right.
Well, I'd also like to thank Dean and David for jumping in and really working on this item, because we did rock and hard spot it one time, but we definitely appreciate the move that we made, so we won't have to, you know, raise no tax or anything, increase it, and then move one fund to another fund, so we appreciate that.
All right. Any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, and we've already had our motions, so all those in favor of the amendment, signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion, the motion to amend the budget passes. I'll ask the administrator, is there anything else we need to discuss under the budget tonight?
There is not.
Okay. So counsel, since we had one citizen that spoke tonight and had those questions, and I think because others will have this question, I wanted to, one more time, put some of this out there, so, you know, it'll be on YouTube and people can see it. So I do want to explain a few things about how we got here, because some people just don't understand. So let me, with your indulgence, go through this one more time, and I know counsel's heard this. So let me start with, I think it's time to start tackling our emergency medical services issue. We all know that EMS is near and dear to everyone's life, so even if you haven't used EMS, most citizens have either used it or have a relative or a friend who's used it. In other words, it touches an extraordinary number of lives, and is necessary in every county. It's the pre-hospital, life-saving operation of our county. I'm not sure why anyone would want citizens to suffer and perhaps die because EMS couldn't reach them in time. And to me, that's the most important issue before us, saving lives. Supporting EMS embodies our focus on helping our friends and family and neighbors. And so for any of those who might be just now catching up with all this, let me explain how we got here. Since last summer, we have had multiple presentations on this issue at our public county council meetings, and we've discussed it at many of our county council meetings since then. Several months ago, we even advertised the newspaper, asking for specific comments on EMS and the increasing, increasing the funding for it. There were also at least a dozen newspaper articles written about this topic in the past year by our daily local newspaper and two local weekly newspapers. While the topic was on Facebook in May, it was also discussed on the same Facebook page more than five months ago. The presentations I've mentioned have been on the county website since they were given, and we posted on the website over six months ago a comprehensive issue paper discussing in layman's terms exactly what is being proposed and the estimated cost. I'm not sure what we could do more to communicate this issue. Counsel went way beyond what is required by law, and we've done more, and we have done more on this issue communication-wise than most other issues. We wanted our citizens to know what we were considering, so you could discuss it with us. I'm pleased we got some feedback tonight. Let me see if I can address some of the issues that I think need to be discussed. First, I want to say that our EMS organization is a professional, well-trained organization, and they do a good job, as we have celebrated here a number of times, but they are still working out of a 20th century model, and we are 25 years into the 21st century. It's time to move them forward and stop treating EMS like a hobby. This council has worked hard over the past several years to improve law enforcement and our fire departments, finding ways to give them more money, improving communications, and in the case of law enforcement and magistrates, a new jail, offices, courtroom, and more. An underpinning of government is to protect citizens. We do that in law enforcement and with fire departments, and with various regulations. EMS is a part of that same protection. We are also under an obligation of state law to provide emergency services to citizens. Emergency medical service is considered an essential service under state law. Just as we had discussed for years that we needed to change the old jail into a new law enforcement center before state government or a judge required it, the same thinking applies here. You may not realize that state law has a blanket exemption from lawsuits, from failure to provide law enforcement or fire protection. This exemption doesn't extend to EMS, which means we can be sued over it. In fact, in the last few years, Aiken was sued over their EMS. One charge in the suit was that personnel were spread too thin and overworked. We need to proactively avoid this happening to us as we continue to grow. So let me stop here and say a word about growth, since that came up as well. I want everyone to understand that people are allowed to move to our county. Most of our county is still unzoned, but zoning or not zoning an area doesn't stop people from wanting to buy or build a home here. Here's a fact, people will move here, buy existing houses here, build new houses here, and raise their families here, because Edgefield County is a great place to live and work. families here because Edgefield County is a great place to live and work. And, you know, contrary to what I have read, other people have said, particularly in social media, we do not have any special treatment of developers that encourages them to build homes here. We offer the similar cost and fees of building homes and businesses as our neighboring counties do. Let me be clear. We don't offer special incentives to developers. As a matter of fact, this council has raised fees on developers, and some of those developers have turned away from Edgefield County because of it. On one other point I want you to know, and this gets back to what we were talking about earlier. Edgefield County is below the state average in housing growth. That means we are not growing as fast as even the state average. But let me get back to EMS. We don't have a line item in our budget for any capital equipment or anything else EMS because there is a special designated millage for EMS in our budget. However, the millage we currently have designated for EMS does not even fully cover operations, much less capital equipment. County council has enacted a number of changes in EMS that have had some impact, such as ordering another ambulance, which is being paid for through the general fund, and moving a small amount of millage from debt service to EMS. Those are, those changes are good, but they really don't make a dent in what we need to do. There's a chance our legislators may be able to come through next year and earmark some amount of state money that will allow us to reduce the EMS millage. There's also a good chance that in 2026, we can add some of the cost of this to the capital project sales tax, which again, would give us an opportunity to lower the millage. I'm all for finding ways to lower the millage, and I know all of counsel sitting with me is. However, there is no silver bullet, no easy fix, no superhero who's going to save the day for us today. Nobody likes or wants a tax increase, which is why this council has been committed to not raising any millage in over fifteen years. But this project only gets more and more expensive if we wait, and that means even higher taxes later. This potential millage increase isn't an increase in the money that goes into the general fund. It would be an increase for EMS exclusively so citizens know exactly what their money is paying for. It is as transparent as you can get. You can watch where every dollar goes. Finally, I want to point out six facts that counsel knows, but I want everyone who is hearing this discussion to know. These are six facts, not opinions. Fact one, about two years ago, this council unanimously agreed in a five-year strategic plan that the number-one goal out of all our goals is to improve EMS. It ranked higher than everything else. Fact two, our EMS has a twelve-minute response time. The national average is nine minutes. Because we are growing, our response time will only get worse if we do nothing. Fact three, the current budget does not have a line item for new ambulances, capital equipment, or additional staff for EMS. Fact four, over the past two years, EMS has transferred funds from its reserve account to make up for budget shortfalls. In this current year's budget, the one we are voting on tonight, counsel is going to transfer from the general fund about three hundred thousand dollars to EMS to make up for the current shortfall, a shortfall that will continue and will also get more and more expensive. That first transfer from the general fund equates to nearly three mills out of the current budget. In other words, these transfers to EMS from the general fund will have a big impact on us funds, having funds to provide other county needs. Fact five, we have raised a few fees in the past fifteen years, but we've not raised millage in that fifteen-year time period. The vast majority of the counties in the state can't say that. Fact six, the millage paid by county citizens in 2020, just five years ago, is higher than the total millage in the budget this year. Let me say that a different way. With the increase in millage in this budget, your taxes will still be three-point-five mills less than you paid five years ago. I apologize for taking so much time, counsel, but I wanted to ensure, ensure we lay out all the facts for everyone to hear. And I certainly will open it up to any comments or questions from counsel.
I'll go first. First of all, I want to thank you, Dean, for covering that. I thought it was very thorough. I'll just piggyback on what you said. This has been a topic that we have been putting out there, trying to make sure we had citizens aware of it, trying to talk about. I know in the town halls that Mr. Moody and I had, this was something we spoke of. You know, we've always tried to be very transparent. I'm going to be honest, as you know, because I've spoken about this before, I've been on the ledge about this. You know, I'm not happy about it. We've worked behind the scenes, all of us have collectively worked very hard. We've tossed out different ideas. We've tried so many different ways to find the funding that does not result in sixteen-point-two-five millage increase, and we had so hoped, you know, the state would be able to help us with this. And I get the, I get where they're coming from, you know, the earmarks gotten out of hand, I get that. It saddens me that something like this, which I, which I would classify as a needed earmark, as a good earmark, if you want to go there, this is something that I would have hoped, would not have been taken off the table. I understand whatever, we're not getting the money this year. I continue to hope that perhaps these good earmarks, if you will, such as EMS, will get back on the agenda and that we will see some money come in perhaps next year. But I will stay committed to the penny tax. I am committed to seeing this become a part of that. I want to see those funds come in so we can help reduce this. I know you've all agreed with me on that. We've had this discussion, and we're committed to rolling it back as a whole. If, if we can, when we can, I'm going to say when we can, because I believe if we get this on the penny tax, we will be able to roll this back. And that is where I'm going with this. It's a bitter pill, and like I said, I've been on the ledge. But for me, it comes down to, I understand what you said about never having to use the ambulance, you know, and we did, and we do now. We just throw them in the car and we get there, you know, because it takes so long to get to where I am. And, but I've had my neighbors, very recently, I've had to ride in the back of that new ambulance with my neighbor to the emergency room, and I know how grateful they were and how grateful I was that it was there and that we could get her there. So I know the need is there, and I would never, ever want to appear as if I do not support EMS because that is, even these discussions that we've had where it might have looked, never, ever was it not about supporting EMS. It was just about finding the right funding and making sure we overturned every rock possible to find alternate ways before we got here. I'm committed to EMS, just like I'm committed to fire, just like I'm committed to the sheriff's office. Those are public safety issues that we, we have to have, we have to have. With all that said, this is a bitter pill. I don't like it. None of us like it. But I do want to continue as soon as we can, we get this on that penny tax, we start rolling some money back. That is, and that's where I am. So thank you again for everybody who's put hard work. Thank you for your comments. One other thing I will add, I don't do social media. So, you know, anything I learn, Mr. Moody tells me of usually. I don't do social media. But as far as being contacted, I've not been contacted by anyone. We've not had people come up here in droves like they have on other issues. So I'm assuming, A, they're either fine with it, or B, they don't like it either, but they're not going to say anything about it. So I will say that. I haven't heard much. I know you guys who do social media have heard more stuff, but no one's contacted me. I'm not getting the fifty emails, you know, a day over other topics you might have gotten in the past. I'm not getting that here. So just put that out there as well.
Other council members?
I would just like to thank Dean, like I said, the facts were the facts, and to follow up on Ms. Ireland, and I've said it for the last four months, and I'll say it again. Getting back to your point, forty-seven percent of the tax money comes from District Five and most of, a lot of District Two, which is Mount Venge, Tiffany's District. So yes, the growth is there. It may be two-point-four countywide, but you see it every day, I see it every day. Hopefully, we can get a second ambulance in our area because I think that's where the people are, and that's where the need will be. There's been talks, people come up to me, why don't take, let the state take it over? Why can't we privatize? You don't want that. You don't want the state running our EMS service. Trust me, and privatization is just too expensive. Getting back to, like you said, if more people did like you did, get in a car and go, it would help this guy's job tremendously. He probably can't tell you how many calls he goes on and the person's toe is hurting, and there's five cars in the driveway that could take him to the hospital. But no, he has to take an ambulance out of service and take them to the hospital, get them unloaded, and come back. So it's, it's the people, a lot of it have created this problem, the people. And I'll just say it because they abuse the system. And he only gets so much money back from Medicare, Medicaid, what, fifty-five percent? Probably what you send out, you get back. So it's a losing business anyway. Nobody would go into business opening a store and knowing they're going to lose forty-five percent every day. They go to work, but that's what we do. So we got to make it up somehow or another. And it hurt when we lost the three-point-five billion dollars for the building. But I can promise you this, I will be getting a report from him every month of how much money's coming in and how much money's going out, and at the end of the year, we'll look at the figures, and if we can recalculate, we will recalculate. And one final thing about transparency, social media, yeah, they burned us up two weeks ago when the news article came out. We don't know what's going on. There's five people here, there's two there. All you got to do is call us. We'll open the books to you and go line item by line item, every dime, where it goes to. So, and we get blamed for everything. The roads aren't any good, that happens in the state. You know, Bill Hickson, Senator Massey, Senator, I mean, Representative Clyburn, that's who you need to call on your roads. We don't, county roads, Doc does what he can with them, but, and we are looking at getting impact fees, which will, when buildings, you know, somebody comes and builds, they will pay an amount that will go toward the new ambulances, the new patrol cars that's going to service that area, a new substation or whatever. So that is an item heavy on the next agenda, next couple of months, you'll be talking, we hear us talk about impact fees. But now, this is a tough pill to swallow, trust me. But I made a commitment when I got elected because I've been in emergency services most of my life. Fire, Sheriff's Department, and EMS was going to be top of my priority. I don't like sixteen-point-twenty-five, but it's just, it's just gotten to that. So, but I can promise you this, we were watching it every day, and I appreciate your comments today. Thank you for coming.
Well, I would like to say, and Dean, his point, I think it explained it very well. We have been working very hard, I mean, just counseling, and don't nobody, owners of council would like to see a tax increase, but it's a necessity when it come down to our EMS. I have a lot of people out on our end, they use it, and they're very plump, they call them, then they down, and I definitely appreciate, you know, I appreciate everybody, not the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, EMS. We just doing all we can do, and that's all we can do, and just wait. Time will present itself. So we just looking forward for the best and like, thank this council for working so diligent. That's what I have to say, Dean.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, it was spring break, I have an eight-year-old dad, and my mom panicked because he has dementia, and the children were no one around. And she made that nine-one-one call, and that nine-one-one call, ambulance came and saved my dad from going to Aiken. So I am definite, definite, I'd like to thank Mr. Kim for all these strong facts.
That's right.
I am definite, definite appreciation of the EMS for saving my dad in spring break. Thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, counsel, is there anything else we want to say about EMS or any other part of the budget before we vote? Like everybody, all of us had our say, so with that, we've already had the motion, we've had the second, we've been in discussion and amended the budget. All those in favor of giving third reading to ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-five, zero, zero, seven, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, counsel, we move to new business, and we've already done item one earlier, so we'll move to add item two. This is a presentation on the Proposed Land Conservation District Rural Agricultural Zoning Map by Hart Clark. And before he starts, I'm just going to point out mainly for the people here, but for counsel, too, this is not for a vote tonight. This is just a presentation, and next month, we'll start the process of a three-reading ordinance on this. But I want everybody to have a presentation, both us and the citizens, so they could hear it and have thirty days to think about it before we ever get to first reading.
Okay. So first off, I want to say the people who are watching on YouTube, you're not going to be able to see the presentation, that part of our system is not working. However, I will post this on the homepage of the Edgefield County website after this meeting and before the next meeting. For the last three months, y'all have already been discussing rural agricultural district. You've already actually written the law, the zoning district exists. What you'll be working on now is where that will apply, so you're actually working on the zoning map. But just for people who are behind, I will briefly go over some of the highlights for what it is. So it's a preservation district. Its intent is to preserve the rural character of the community and agricultural heritage of the areas that it's applied in. It maintains open space, low-density living, and allows compatible residential and local commercial uses. When I say local commercial uses, you know, things like a grocery store, a restaurant, things like that, yes. Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, no. Manufacturing, mining, those sorts of things are restricted. Some of the details, minimum lot size will be two acres. Most of the area that this is in currently already has a more restrictive covenant in place. However, as services and growth occur and expand, that could change, so this will lock it in at two acres. Setbacks, so for major highways, that's fifty-foot front setback. For minor, now miners, like your subdivision roads, so if somebody comes in and builds a development, they got to be twenty-five feet off of that collector road. But any houses that are built directly on a main road or main highway have to have setback fifty. Any commercial uses have to have setback of a hundred feet. Doesn't matter if they're on a collector road, main road, doesn't, irrelevant, a hundred Fifteen-foot side and twenty-foot rear for residential, across the board, there's no adjustments there, and then fifty-foot all the way around on side and rear for commercial. Some of the permitted uses, all types of agriculture, single-family homes, things like grocery stores, elderly care, medical facilities, veterinary clinics, daycares, community housing, gyms, weapon ranges, bed and breakfast, restaurants, bars, churches, public buildings, so, you know, EMS substation, sheriff's substation, all, anything that would be public use is allowed. Things that are not permitted, mining, commercial solar power generation, all power generation, whether it be a coal plant, nuclear plant, whatever, it's not allowed. Manufacturing or wholesale trades, so any manufacturing, so any industry manufacturing, not allowed. Scrap waste vehicle, furniture, electronics, clothing, fuel trade, and this is, this is wholesale, not direct sales. So this is, you know, distribution centers, think of it that way, not allowed. Flea markets, manufacturer housing dealers. Flea markets, manufactured housing dealers, truck stops, air rail, truck transportation, pipelines, warehousing, mini warehouses, storage, publishing, motion pictures, banks, pawn shops, real estate offices, office buildings, billboards, landfills, all of that is restricted. This is the area that it's proposed to go in, so this is the most relevant part for the upcoming discussion. It stopped, it starts up there around Ransford Road. Y'all know where that's at on Sweetwater. It goes all the way around and down to where the existing zoning down at the Mealing Stevens Road area starts, and then it goes all the way to the river and then up Garrett Road through Coilers Community. Almost all of this is landing in Tiffany's district, so she will likely get the most calls from this. But a little bit of it is in Dr. Kenyon's district, and there are a few parcels that are in Jerry Moody's district. And of course, y'all are the chair and vice chair, so y'all are gonna get complaints no matter what. After y'all have the first reading, I will send out, I will mail out postcards to every single property that would be affected by this new zoning. It will have my contact information on it, not yours, but you will still receive calls Once that's done, that will give them notice before the actual public hearing for the zoning map. So, they will receive a postcard in the mail before we have the second reading and public hearing on the map. Most of it is large-track agricultural land. We did not, you know, just blanket, I mean, you could blanket the whole county, but you get up into timberland when you get into West Side. Originally, we were not gonna include Garrett Road, but the residences of Garrett Road actually came and attended the planning commission meeting and requested to be added to it. So, that's why that spur extends so high, it goes all the way up to Highway twenty-three. Originally, it was going to be cut off at Garrett Road and it was not gonna go any further, but they specifically requested it. Some of the stats, this increases the amount of property zoned in Edgewood County by roughly seventeen percent, so it is a large increase in the amount of zoned property in the county. It affects one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-four parcels of land, so that means we will mail out one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-four letters and we will get comments from twenty percent of those, I would assume. I will be making an R S V P list as comments come in. If anybody wants to speak directly at that public hearing, I will be recording that up front so that if we do get bombarded or overloaded, I can let y'all know well in advance of the actual public hearing and we can make whatever necessary changes that we have to make. This impacts fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-nineteen acres of land, so it is a very large area that is being zoned. As I said, the, the most impact is Tiffany. Overwhelming majority of the parcels are in Tiffany's district, but it also affects Kenyon and Moody's districts as well. The rural agriculture district, I mean, its purpose is to preserve rural living and local services and restrict anything that would be detrimental to that. That's the whole point, is preservation. It has very strict limits on commercial industrial uses and it focuses on long-term rural quality. So, farmland, housing, that's what it's focused on. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it, whether it's about this or something else.
Let me open it up and ask you, the, the one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-four parcels, today, are those, are a hundred percent of those unzoned today?
Yes, we are not zoning any currently zoned parcels. I do have a separate application from Moody to include or change some parcels that are in his district. I am still in the process of doing the legal review. As some of y'all know, you can't just pick a parcel that's in the middle of a whole different zoning district and change it. So, I have to figure out how to actually achieve his goal and then make a counter recommendation. But I am in the process of reviewing that. Last couple of weeks been kinda hectic for me, but I, I will turn that around and that will actually come as a second application to y'all. I will not include it in this original application. Y'all might be able, voting on them at the same time, but it will be a totally separate ordinance.
And they get postcards too, correct?
They will. But again, I will wait till right before the second reading for that so that people aren't confused about when the public hearing is. So, after the first reading, I'll send those out.
And is there any thought to, you know, if we get a lot of feedback, having, I'll call it separate public meetings like we had for zoning, where we invited people to meetings so they could ask questions that weren't a voting meeting here, it was just in the community?
Now, now, of course, when we did the twenty-nineteen comprehensive plan and it started, kicked off the LMO and all of those things, we did charrettes three times a week for months. They were hosted by councilmen, they were hosted at schools, at churches. We, we had a lot of meetings and I attended most of them. So, I have no issue if y'all set up a meeting or if you get a lot of kickback or feedback and you want to do a town hall type meeting, you let me know and I will come and answer any questions that they have and take any comments that they have. Also, in case y'all get bombarded with questions, I will be printing five very large detailed copies of the map and providing them to Aretha, she will have them in the office. So, if you need one, you can just go and get one from her and then, of course, I will have, April will have one in her office for anybody that wants to come in and, and sit down and talk to me directly, we will have one there, of course.
One other question for me, I noticed one of the things not allowed is mining, but we already have a mining group in there, so that, I would assume, remains unzoned?
So, now, you see I made that pink? That pink is industrial. So, when we initially started talking about this, that whole, you probably can't see my clicker on there, but this whole parcel here was one, one piece of land, one twenty-seven-hundred-acre parcel. At the time, it was not separated and so I left that unzoned in the initial presentation to planning commission, going through planning commission. Since then, it has been separated out. So, the remainder of that twenty-seven-hundred-acre parcel is proposed to go to rural agriculture. However, I'm not gonna create a non-conformity if I don't have to, so I zoned their parcel where the mine will operate appropriately, which would be industrial. There are other options, but industrial, of course, matches what their use the best. So, that is also part of that map, is to adjust their parcel and make sure the remaining of it is locked into rural agriculture.
And, I'm sorry, one last thing, on economic development, for counsel's information, I talked to Will Williams about this map, talked to him as latest today. I've talked to him a couple of times about it and the zoning ordinance itself and the map. And Will's opinion, Will was here, but he had to go to an Aiken County Council meeting that starts later than ours, so he had to go to that one, but, so he had to leave. But in talking to him, he said that the, you know, there's at least some out there that are just starting to get wind of this and thinking this is just a residential district and it allows commercial, smaller commercial, not Walmart, not Home Depot, but grocery stores, et cetera, like your list showed. So, there is commercial development, but from Will's perspective, from industrial development, the mining apart, because that's a separate entity of itself and will be by itself. But he said, there is nowhere in there that he would put an industry, even if we pass no zoning. You know, there's too many houses, there's not the right place there to put an industry like a Generac or some manufacturing. So, he said, he would never be looking in that area for that. So, it doesn't impact him in that way. And he wanted me to point out that in today's manufacturing, bigger industrial world, those people who come in are drawing their employees from a forty-five-mile radius. So, having more rooftops in that area is an advantage to him, he said, because that's more people who can come work at industries that he does put in the other places in the county that are, are made for industry. So, I just wanted to pass that along.
Right. And also, a very large portion of, of District Two is challenging topography-wise, I'll put it that way. And, you know, some people have said that, you know, two acres is a huge lot size requirement, which in some places of the county, that would be absolutely true. But in a lot of District Two, especially in that particular area, you would have a hard time getting two acres to park, more than less anything smaller than that, and that's the truth. It's hard red clay and granite underneath it, it's the mine wanting to be located there. So, it's not a huge impact in terms of lot size. I know it sounds severe, but it's, it's, it's really not. The chances of public services being expanded into that area anytime in the near future is extremely slim, I'll just put it that way. To run sewer water into that area would cost astronomical amounts of money. That being said, if we did have interest in a larger development in the future, there are options to change things. It's, you know, if Mount Vintage wanted to expand or something like that, they can always request a change of zoning or they can, you know, request a planned development. There, there's a process they can go through for that. But overall, day-to-day, I believe it's an appropriate zoning for the area and does not really restrict the daily lives of the citizens that live there and it does protect them from things that would impact their lives.
Just let me just point out, if, if the zoning was not there and say, we're just gonna pick on Mount Vintage for a moment, or another developer in that area wanted to come and put an expansion, they could at this point because there's nothing there to stop them.
Yes.
This does stop.
As you have experienced many times, and I have said until I'm blue in the face and hoarse, if you're unzoned, we have not a single tool in which to use to deny you.
Right.
If, if you can legally put it there as in environmentally, you know, get through all the other agencies, whether it's DOT, DHEC, DES, if you can get through them, there's no no on our part if we don't regulate it through some sort of zoning ordinance.
And that's pretty much how this came to be, how this was birthed?
That's how this started and got created, yes.
Yes, that's how the birth came about. Correct me if I'm wrong, am I okay to be speaking? Sorry. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it wasn't initially supposed to go as far as Ransford either, correct? That was in response to some citizen feedback as well, am I correct?
That is correct. So, we were actually, there's no way you'll see it on the map, some of you will just be able to look at it and know, but if you, if you know where Republican Road is, right there, basically the second entrance or the secondary entrance of Mount Vintage, that's where it originally was going to stop. But we got requests to just extend it right on up to Ransford. And honestly, I don't know if any of you drive down Ransford or on Van Road, but those are very large agricultural lots anyway. It has no impact on any of the existing persons out there, so.
So, while it looks like, and, and, and I've said this many times before, well, I guess first of all, let me begin by saying, this has been going on for quite a while. Again, transparency, this has been going on for a long time. Well before it came to us, and we've been discussing it in the creation of the district for the past three-plus months.
So, total, we've been discussing it for about almost a year, eleven months.
I was just gonna say, at least a year. Through the planning commission, all of the meetings that went on with it, several different people involved, because the planning commission had changes of people, but lots of different people on it as well had involvement in this, had, had a lot of feedback. We did get a lot of feedback from citizens through the planning commission. That is how it did grow because initially, when, when we started looking at this, it was very, much more compact there, did not nearly encompass what it does now. But as you said, it grew from the feedback that citizens gave. They wanted it expanded.
That's right. And it grew so much that y'all actually had to change the comp plan to make this possible.
Right. So, and again, would like to point out that this was born out of responses that we got consistently from citizens after the LMO debacle at every single town hall that we held. Please do something to keep these lots, to keep this land protected, so develop that cannot come here. Please keep it at a minimum lot. Please do something. So, this is how, I just want everyone to know again, how this came to be, how this is working. Mr. Moody and I, again, held a town hall a couple, several months ago and this topic was discussed, got, again, overwhelming support. The feedback was, this is what we asked for, this is what you're doing. I'm not married to this, you know, this, if they need, we put, need to pull it back or, you know, if the citizens come and force. But this is the creation of listening to the citizens. This is what the citizens said they wanted and this is what we're trying to do for them. So, just wanted to, to put that out there and say that. So, consistently, overwhelmingly, that is what we have heard. I want to thank the planning commission for their time they spent on this and the time that we're gonna have to, gonna have to give, thank y'all.
That's why I came to you, because of what Tiffany just said, people came to me wanting their land, large tracts, which I gave you, they want it protected also for when they pass on and family takes over. They want protection in what's already zoned, but it's large tracts, because that's where water and sewage is available, so.
And we're not ignoring you, sir, I know you want to speak, but I think you have to do it at the, the end of this public hearing unless Mr. Campbell, but we're not ignoring you, I see your hand going up, but I think you have to sign up to speak in a minute, is that correct?
Right.
Any other questions for Doc? Okay, thank you, Doc. All right, appreciate that and we'll take that up at the next meeting and first reading, that was a good introduction. All right, let's see, counsel, we'll move on to number three under new business, consideration of approval to proceed with asbestos abatement in the agriculture building located on Gray Street, cost of permitting, asbestos abatement, asbestos disposal and post-project cleanings recommended to be awarded to Chaplin and Sons for thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. I'll ask the administrator for some details, please.
Thank you. So, counsel is familiar with this, we talked about it during the last meeting, that as we were preparing to replace carpet primarily in the Clemson Extension Offices, we found that there was asbestos associated with the tile. Unfortunately, the carpet is glued to the tile, so as you pull the carpet, you, you disturb the asbestos. In this particular case, we received three bids, but two of them did not meet our specifications, one of them didn't even begin to meet our specifications, and that would subject us to some liability. So, there was one complete bid and fortunately, it was considerably less than what we anticipated. I think I, I told counsel, we were looking at around forty thousand. This bid is thirty-one thousand, so we recommend going with Chaplin and Sons. Thank you.
Questions or comments from counsel? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve awarding this bid to Chaplin, Chaplin and Sons?
No move.
Mr. Moody makes the motions, there a second.
Give me a second.
Mr. Talbert, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, counsel, is number four under new business, is consideration of approval to award the contract to Gore Construction for flooring and plumbing fixture replacement in the recreation office for thirty-two thousand, replacement of carpet in the treasurer's office for ten-thousand-seven-fifty and to award the contract to RG Novello for replacement of carpet in the voter registration office for nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Bids were solicited from four contractors, but only, we only received bids from two. So, again, I'll ask the administrator for the details, please.
Thank you. So, before we get started, let me just say that the recreation office is the former sheriff's office, the voter registration office is- office, the Voter Registration Office is the former magistrate's office, just so we're clear in the buildings we're talking about. But these are projects that we plan to tackle with the county building renovation funds that council assigned for this purpose in April. Again, Gore Construction, low bid for carpet and plumbing in the Recreation Building and flooring in the Treasurer's Office. As you recall, Treasurer Joe Knight came in and made this request during the budget meetings. And RG Novello is low bid for the Voter Registration Building carpeting. These bids are all within our anticipated cost. We've used both contractors, they're reputable contractors, and RG Novello is already replacing the tile in that same building, so he will seamlessly flow into replacing the carpet. And of course, we use Gore on many of our projects, so we recommend approval. Thank you.
Questions or comments from council?
I've got a question on the voter registration, I guess. Novello came in at $93.35, and Gore came in at $17,000, but it looks like Gore is going to do more, he's going to replace the subfloor and put new subflooring in, and that's not listed under Novello's bid.
That is correct. Novello believes that the subfloor does not need to be replaced, and he has a different plan to use subflooring on top of the existing, if it needs to be done. So when I considered his potential add-ons, it still came in less than $17,000.
Other questions or comments from council? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the bids as presented for the Recreation Office, the Treasurer's Office, and the Voter Registration Office? Dr. Kenyon makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, council is number five under new business, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance 2425009, and ordinance authorizing and approving, one, development of a joint county industrial and business park pursuant to Section 401170, Dakota laws, South Carolina 1976 as amended, in conjunction with Aiken County, the park, such park to be, at the time of its initial development, geographically located in Aiken County, going to include certain property now or to be owned and/or operated by a company identified for the time being as Project Sunflower, one or more affiliates and/or project sponsors. Two, the execution and delivery of a written park agreement with Aiken County as to the requirement of payment of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to park property, and the sharing of revenues and expenses of the park. Three, the distribution of revenues from the park within Aiken County, and four other matters related there, too. I'll ask the administrator what we need to know about this one, please.
Thank you. These comments will pertain to this item and item number six. They are the same situations, just different projects. But these ordinances, this ordinance and the next one establishes a multi-county industrial park with Aiken County. The park will be located in Aiken County. These agreements to create a multi-county industrial park will allow the industry in the park to receive certain incentives from the state and the county, meaning Aiken County. Edgefield County will receive 1% of the fee in lieu of taxes. This is simply a procedural function. It will not involve Edgefield County creating a new industrial park, requiring investment from Edgefield County. There will be none. We simply benefit by receiving 1% of the fee in lieu of taxes money. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance number 2425009?
So moved.
Mr. Talbert makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Number six under new business, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance 2425010, and ordinance authorizing and approving, one, development of a joint county industrial and business park pursuant to Section 4170 of the Dakota laws of South Carolina 1976 as amended, in conjunction with Aiken County, the park, such park to be, at the time of its initial development, geographically located in Aiken County, going to include certain property now or to be owned and/or operated by DCB North Augusta LLC, one or more affiliates and/or project sponsors. Two, the execution and delivery of a written park agreement with Aiken County as to the requirement of payment of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to park property and the sharing of revenues and expenses of the park. Three, the distribution of revenues from the park within Aiken County, and four other matters related there, too. The administrators already told us about this one and the last one, so I'll just ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Hearing none. Is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance number 2425010?
I may.
Ms. Ireland makes the motion, is there a second? And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. That's the end of the business portion. Next is the second comment period. Did we have someone signed up for that? I'll remind any speakers that there's a five-minute time limit. The clerk will give you a verbal warning at four minutes, and then the verbal warning when you hit five minutes. With counsel, Swiss said, we have one person signed up, and that would be Gloria Bynum. And Gloria Bynum is not here anymore.
She just left.
Sorry. All right, that's the only person that signed up. All right, then I will close the public comment period, the second one, and move to reports from county council members.
I don't have a report, but if I may, I just want to say, you know, we did have in the county, and the Blue family is a whole hard week last week, and I would just like to thank everyone from the community who supported and who loved on the family of Ada and who lifted them up. And I would like to thank the Sheriff's Department and the county offices that turned out to just lift that family up, who have supported her and the family, and who have been there, holding her hand, the family's hand, and just walking through this tragedy with them. It was an amazing, amazing outpouring of love that we witnessed at her funeral, just absolutely amazing. I know the comfort, that the family drew comfort from that, and I just would like to ask everyone to continue to lift up that family in their prayers, because a lot of people never meet, you know, you meet the deputies out and about, you don't ever really meet the dispatchers, they're the voice behind, but they are just as important to the function of the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, and we're going to miss Ada. And if you could just keep her family in your prayers, but officers, the deputies, the men on the road as well, they see a lot, like was already mentioned, and it's been a hard week. And if you will just continue to keep the Blue family and the Ada Duncan family in your prayers, and appreciate everybody who's done so this far.
Thank you. Any other reports from county council members? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. I'll ask the county administrator for his report.
Thank you. First, we'd like to talk about recreation. We started summer camps this week with youth line dancing. Next week, basketball, cheerleading, and adult art camps. The week of June 16th, we'll have an outdoor camp. The week of June 23rd, outdoor camp and a kids' art and crafts camp. July 7th, soccer camp and an adult line dancing camp. We thus far have 131 signed up for our camps, and I wouldn't be surprised if it went well over 150 before we get to the soccer camp. We're very proud of our recreation staff for pulling this together, as well as the many volunteers, coaches, helpers, and county staff, including Aretha over there, who keeps all of these kids fed during the camps. In addition to the camps, we have begun a martial arts class at the Scout Hut with seven signed up, and an early morning adult strength conditioning class at the town gym with 16 signed up so far. So Recreation Director Nick Waits informed me that after all costs are deducted, the Recreation Department golf tournament that we had last week cleared over $10,000 for county recreation. Now, why is this important? It's important because it keeps camp fees low for the parents sending these kids to camp, and it helps us not have to use tax monies through the general fund to subsidize these camps. So any fundraisers we can do really help, and I know it helps parents of multiple kids a lot. So we want to keep doing more of these, and we have, I think, received now $25,000 in sponsorships and contributions just to help the children of the county for sports registration and camp registration. So kudos to all the businesses that are supporting the kids like this. County renovations continue. On top of what council approved tonight, the Recreation Building has been painted, and the Voter Registration Building will be painted tomorrow. Tile has been replaced in the Voter Registration Office, the bathroom's in the lobby. Carpet has been installed in the NRCS building, and the interior has been painted. EMA Director Crowder secured an $18,000 grant for a digital message board that we are looking at installing in partnership with the town of Edgefield, somewhere in the area of the Edgefield Fire Department down towards Piedmont Tech. So let me just stop for a minute and say that if you're having a discussion at a table, that something might be a good idea, and our EMA Director hears it, he's going to go get a grant for it. So we may wonder why you're hearing about it, and we've already received the money. So day-to-day use would be upcoming events, recreation signups, et cetera, but the underlying purpose and the reason the Duke Foundation gave us the grant is to provide community information during major events like Hailene. The board will be able to run off of a generator during extended outages. So this came about after we put out a survey to county employees and the public evaluating our response to Hailene. And one of the needs identified was to explore other ways of getting messages out, and it kept coming back to us. Residents would say, we always look at the digital sign in front of the schools. Could you do something like that? Because a neighbor could see it calling another neighbor. So it's just a simple way of complimenting social media, our text alerts, and so forth. Mayor Holmes of Johnston has expressed an interest in sharing message space with, on Johnston's Board with the county as well. We hope to bring a proposal to council soon on this. We're generating quotes right now to find out what this will cost us, and that's all.
Questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to chairman's comments. You'd think I wouldn't have anything left to say tonight, but I apologize, but I do have a few things to say. I appreciate the work we completed on the budget tonight. It contains what our citizens want and what they need. I want to remind council that at our last meeting, I said that the next six months would be very busy. We heard tonight about upcoming items like a potential impact fee that could be coming to us for discussion, a new zoning area, and tonight I want to mention one other item that will be coming up soon. In 2019, council approved a lease between Edgefield County Hospital and Self Regional Healthcare. That partnership produced new doctors' offices outside the hospital, additional doctors for our county citizens, and more than $2.2 million invested in our hospital so far. The 10-year lease agreement ends in 2029. Self would like to extend the lease past 2029. The reason is that Self plans on making additional healthcare investments in Edgefield County, including adding millions of dollars more into our hospital to continue to improve healthcare, along with additional doctors. They also said they would be happy to take on the now vacant doctor's office in Johnston since Dr. Morgan has now retired. They said they plan to bring some healthcare professional to the Johnston office. Self doesn't want to invest millions of dollars over the next three years, only to have the county say in 2029 that we don't want to renew the lease. They want to protect their investment, which is what we should expect them to do. So I think in our six years now of running time with Self, they've proven they operate efficiently and they care about our citizens, and they have improved the availability and quality of healthcare in Edgefield County. Let me put it a little more bluntly. If Self had not stepped in six years ago, I'm not sure the hospital would be open today. In the coming months, we'll have several items on the agenda related to this potential extension, so council and citizens can see what's being proposed. I just wanted to, tonight, to make everyone aware of that, and that more details are coming soon. So with that, council, there is no further business tonight. I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dr. Kenyon makes the motions, is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you to everyone.